You're listening to the We Are Libertarians Podcast Network. Find all of our shows at wearelibertarians.com. You can play outside longer if you wear sunscreen. You can fly higher on a halfpipe with a helmet. And you wouldn't jump out of an airplane without a parachute. Your finances are no different. Protecting your future allows you to go after your goals more aggressively. Explore this unique perspective beside an agent with the backing of New York Life. Insurance, investments, retirement, and more. Visit NYL.com to learn more. Investments are offered through registered representatives of NY Life Securities LLC, member FINRA, CIPIC, a New York life company. You're listening to the We Are Libertarians Network. Learn more at wearelibertarians.com.
Welcome everybody to We Are Libertarians Low Key Wall episode. Of course, Harry Press, you guys usually see me or hear me from the Tuesday show. Usually I would have did more prep and set this thing up, but I've been having a really weird day. I had some stuff going on in my personal life and Gunther has been a little, how do you say? We just started on Solid Foods this week, so she's kind of not been very pleasant so far. She's been very cranky. I think she doesn't hate it because her pooping schedule has been let up. So a little TMI for non-parents out there, or maybe just my experience dealing with Gunther and trying to get her to go to Solid Foods. So that's what I'm dealing with. So I didn't really have much time to prep this episode, but I really wanted to do this episode more to get in touch with everybody to find out, you know, what do they like about this whole show? What do they, you know, what, what do they want from it? What are we doing it? If they like me doing it, I'll keep doing it. Also, what is it going to be for, how do you say? Is it, is this time slot fine? Is this what you guys want? You know, because if, no, like, I'm finally like everyone like one of the like in podcast fashion, go ahead, download this thing, re-listen to it. I get that. I do that too, to a lot of different podcasts. But, you know, for the people who do like, like live things, want to come in live, want to jump here on Twitch Live, communicate through the, to the chat room, or just want to get in the Discord and jump on the wall Twitch stream, voice chat room and come and talk. I limited down to just three people, so just to have a small revolving chair. Let me introduce the other guy that's sitting in right now. We've got Stone. Stone, you want to say hi?
Uh, hello there. I had less time to prepare, like 20 minutes.
That's all the time Stone needs. But, uh, yeah, so that's, I said, like, I don't really, I'm trying to, you know, I'm somewhere I'm playing, but I don't know where I'm looking for you. Just trying to feel out the room and see what you guys want, because it seems to me that you guys like extra content, like these extra things. I want to continue to do that, but I'm just, you know, just trying to fill you guys out which works best for everybody else. Wednesday works great for me because it allows me to take the leftovers from Tuesday night show and bring them over here to Wednesday, something to talk about. Or what Dear Leader likes to do is take stories he doesn't care about that I put in a trellor board and just kick them all over into now this category. Usually go like, that's nice, Harry, and just puts them off to the side or puts them further down on the list. And like, oh no, we didn't get to that. We're at three hours and just ends the show with me. But, you know, he knows, he, for some reason, Dear Leader knows, oops, oops, clicked that. That was, oops, that was my bad. I have this things that took him apart on my desk and I really should have cleaned off my desk. And this wall logo is right in my face. I need to move it. I need to move it. It needs to be, it should be here. That's better. Okay. All right, that's better. So, yeah, so like I said, really looking for a lot of feedback on this, but tonight I'm going to try to bring up, we've got, I get some listeners that brought up, want to talk about that thing that happened in Hawaii. I want to kind of rant about the CPU thing. I want to talk more about Ross Ulbricht's stuff. I want to kind of touch, you know, like, and then just touch, like I said, touch base on what's going on with you guys. From last episode, I'm trying to, I'm going to discuss it now, what I am drinking my beer inside of this, because like a lot of people did want to know, I am drinking tonight, I shouldn't have put it in the beer cozy, is a beer that I did not get to get last year because I did not drink while my wife was pregnant. So while Lace was pregnant with Gunther, I did not drink the entire time. So I missed out on this beer last year when it first came out and it's from Triton. Yeah, Triton Brewery. And it's the Ale Pachino. Yeah, the Ale Pachino. Say hello to our little friend, a seasonal collaboration with local coffee roasters. The Ale Machino is a coffee organic chocolate infused milk brown ale. And it tastes delicious. Oh, that was my first sip ever of this beer. Oh man, I missed that last year. Missed that last year. Oh, Stone, you want to say something?
I would just say, sounds, it sounds good, man.
It does, it does.
It does, it does.
It does.
Does.
Hopefully.
Someone else is here. Look at that.
Oh, we've got insert name here. Got some more people from the, from the Discord. Want to say hi? Okay, they're probably at work and just jumping in and like probably sneak a, sneak a high in there once in a while. Or they're fiddling with their microphone. Sweet, mic test, live on air. Hello?
Maybe did it on accident.
Maybe, could have, maybe did it on accident. Hello?
Yeah, for some reason the Bluetooth wasn't working.
Oh, using Bluetooth.
Yeah, and that works, that's all I have.
It's okay, it's okay. Oh, look, we've got someone else that wants to get, get in and tap in when they're, when they're done eating. Yeah, just tell us when you're done eating, we'll tap, I'll see if I can tap you in. Then I'll hold back that story that you posted.
I'll get out when they're going to come in. I'm not really doing too much and I have people come over and I come in.
Okay, that's a nice of you, Stone. All right, insert name here. Nukadaxia, Nukadaxia. Okay, all right, so.
Thank you. I don't want my career to stop like this.
Got it, got it. You know, like, and some people dock themselves, like, this is more some YouTuber stuff. If you look at any like the, I like to, I, I've never been into watching the quote unquote skeptic community's videos. I haven't cared about them, but until they started really having a lot of their drama. Oh my God, oh, I've loved just watching their drama. Yeah, oh man, just watching their drama every week. It's like, wow, this is awesome. You know? Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, our Discord is full of nothing but high academics too.
YouTube scientist.
I think that's the wrong word there. You meant autistic.
Autist, yeah, YouTube autist, yeah. Oh yeah, which is hilarious. Let's see, the, but the other thing that really ticked me off of the whole, like, the thing that really like was the most crushing thing to the whole process of it was Aiden Palated showing her real face. I was very upset. I did not know, I did not want to know her real face because honestly, one of the things that really got me to listen to her videos is because I thought I knew who she was, like her voice sounded very familiar, like I've either been in the same room with her. And when I saw her face, I was like, I've never met this woman in my life and I was very upset and it took all the mystique and main reason I was listening to her channel. But I kept trying to place that voice, like I know this voice from somewhere.
Understandable, but she's still a cutie 3.14, so.
Yeah, yeah, she is. Yeah, I'll give you that. I'll give, I'll give her that, I'll give her that. You know, I'm not, I'm just saying that it just went down a little for me, that's all, that's all, just dipped. The mystique of it just dipped, made it dip for me. Anyway, so main thing I want to, ooh, ooh, uh, let's see. Anything I want to go on to is some of the more of the, like, the, we touched upon the Ross Ulbricht stuff. And it seems like every time, every comment section, anytime you bring up Ross Ulbricht, see if I could kick it over here to, yeah, there we go. Every time you bring up Ross Ulbricht. Sorry, I had a burp, hit my burp button. Hope that, hope that worked, hope that burp button worked. Every time you bring up Ross Ulbricht, it seems like there's so much miscommunication, so much misunderstanding of the trial. Like everyone viewed the trial as, this is, you know, like, he's a murdering kingpin. He sets it up and they set him up as he was running this massive drug ring, that he was just this evil kingpin set out to like, you know, run the, rule the world, when in reality, he's anybody between the age of 38 and 25 that had access to the internet connection, that ever built a website, that had any type of, you know, libertarian leaning. He built this site for like, almost like an idea, as a project, and just to see what he can make. It started growing out of, it grew so fast, so quickly with it. And then the simple fact that the brilliance, also they take out a lot of the brilliance in the site. The site was set up very brilliantly way that they would, because Bitcoin was still in its infancy when, you know, the Silk Road really took off. Well, took off in, you know, dark net, dark net. I am doing air quotes, I just realized that some of people are probably watching this live and won't see me air quote, but the quote, the, you know, took off in the dark net, air quote, dark net. People like would, the idea of taking someone's Bitcoins, putting that into an escrow system, okay? And then waiting for the, like, the transaction to happen and then pay everyone out through this brilliant escrow process, you know? But I was like, well, it's just an escrow process, yeah, but it's an escrow process and trying to get people to understand doing that with digital quote unquote fake currency of Bitcoin, right? And at that time, who really thought and knew of Bitcoin? Okay? And to watch, and, you know, watch this marketplace just kind of flurry, flurry. What I really liked about the Silk Road was that, one, the community and the forums, you know, just all these people talking back, sharing ideas. And the non-drug stuff that was on, basically the non-drug stuff. Now granted, like the largest pool is because of the drug stuff that was on there, but a lot of the non-drug stuff was also really cool and interesting to see on the Silk Road. The, what was it, the stupid Windows, stupid Windows 8, being stupid. It's supposed to snap and it didn't. I moved it over so it would snap. Yes, we do. Windows 8, it's a beautiful operating system, except when it messes up. So they got these people to trust into this pseudo anonymous currency, okay? It's not really, Bitcoin's not anonymous. To trust in this currency, to put their money in this Astro account and to get, get different things out there. So like, it was like a brilliant sort of free market. See, the idea of allowing people just to exchange anything, because people had on there, people would also do like life-saving things on there, because you can get on there and you can get EpiPens, you can get different medications. So like, if you knew you had to get this medication and this type of dosage, you could also bought, you could have bought that through Bitcoin off of the Silk Road. So there's a lot of people, let's say you couldn't afford like the outrageous, you know, rates of a drug, but you could probably find it on Bitcoin, on, on the Silk Road and buy it through Bitcoin. It was beautiful. You guys want to jump in on anything? I'm, I'm sorry, I don't want to like, I know you guys are talking through limited microphones, so you can't just like look at me and give me the wink and the nod.
Uh, I want to, I honestly know what this is because I've been out of politics past problems, so I need to let you keep talking.
Okay, insert name here.
Uh, I was going to ask, what in, because I'm out of the loop, what in particular is going on with Ross's trial?
Say that again?
Since I'm out of the loop, I wanted to ask, what is going on with Ross's trial?
Okay. From the website FreeRoss.org and everything you can see from like Lynn's talk and stuff like that, I'm hoping like Lynn, Lynn Ulbricht, Ross's mother, will bring up some more stuff at Liberty Forum here in February. But what has happened is his, the, he has basically exhausted almost every like regular and all like, every appeal that he has. He's got one last appeal left that's over here, that he, this was basically like the Hail Mary, was trying to do the writ certiora and try to get the Supreme Court to see his case, because this guy for running a website is getting 40 years and two double life sentences for running a website, doing, and basically running a free market eBay website. The idea that, the false idea that he was a drug kingpin, that he's moving drugs around, they were threatening people is completely fa, completely false. And if those cases, and if that was true, in which they would have brought it up in trial. If you look at, if you ever listen to Lynn's talk, which I think we may, I may do here on Twitch, do a Vodcast on it, on just go through and just sit back and watch Lynn talk about the trial, which they did barely allow any cameras inside, barely allowed anyone to like to audio record, because the trial was a complete kangaroo court of them just trying to set an example so this wouldn't, so they, no other site like this would be created again, which had the opposite effect of happening. There's just many sites like this now. But they didn't, there was a lot of different evidence that they'd used in the media that never got brought into trial. Then you could never bring up the simple fact that there were, at the time of this case, millions of Bitcoins, which probably adding up now close to the billions of Bitcoins now that were missing at the trial, that were missing because federal agents either mishandled or they're just missing. Two, I think, two or four of the federal agents that were in this trial, they were brought up on corruption charges and I believe two of them by the time the trial was, after the trial, two of them actually got sentenced and are serving jail time. They also never disclosed, one, how they found the server. They always gave some weird idea, like some real etherish idea, because the, the main reason you got to find out how they found the server, it's because did the federal government break any laws doing that? You know, be, and, and my main thing is like they would, it's not, it's not easy finding things on Tor, but they could have, but of course they also, the, the federal agents also had root access on the server for, I think they said like eight months. So they could have done anything on the server to give it a callback to it, once they got root access, because apparently they did what they always do to, like, what federal agents do to get access into like these dark things, is that they find the weakest link in every chain, when once they found that weak link, they compromised somebody and got their login credentials and then was able to pose as this person to Ross and to gain, and they used their resources to garner more trust, like find drugs and find different things. At least this is what it's also shown in the forum post, but that forum is they also have root control access and most people who knows if you have root control access to a server, you can do anything. That's basically administrative access. So just like the funny GIF of, like, you can go to, you know, you can right-click on your site, get the page source and you can change wording and text and like that. You basically can do that to a forum if you have root access on a server, you can just change anything you want on it, including a timestamp. So like the forum post to me, you know, it's, it's got to be let go because there's, you know, like, there was, to me, it's a mishandling of evidence. They had root control for too long, they could have did anything.
Look around, you can find cars like these on AutoTrader, like that car right in your tail. Or if you're tailgating right now, all those cars doubling as kitchens and living rooms are on AutoTrader too. Are you working out and listening to this ad at the same time? Well, multitasking pro, cars like the ones in the gym parking lot are for sale on AutoTrader. New cars, used cars, electric cars, maybe even flying cars. Okay, no flying cars, but as soon as they get invented, they'll be on AutoTrader. Just you wait. AutoTrader.
So with it's, back to his trial. So he's got this Hail Mary writ of, writ of certiora. We're probably going to find out probably in 2018 whether the Supreme Court is going to try to hear Ross's case. And if they don't hear it, there's nothing else for him to do, which is sad. He's just stuck in prison, which is like a very sad thing, because he's, he's serving double life sentences and he's never harmed a person. You know, he's a peace-loving, peace-loving guy. Stone?
Stone?
Yeah, I don't really trust the American justice system that much anymore, so it's not like I can say I'm surprised.
Yeah, and I think anyone who had any faith in some of the justice, the American justice system can see the holes in it by just looking at Ross Ulbricht's case. You know, like, well, there'll be fair justice in it. Well, look at Ross's case, just look at it, you know? Regardless whether you think he's wrong or right, whether you think drugs should be the way, look at the way he was brought up on charges, look at the way they, they took him down. Just look at this and tell me if that's even remotely fair. Because even if like, even, there's some people that I've watched, people like, well, drugs are bad, da, 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 but 40 years plus two double life sentences is crazy. It's nuts and it's an extraordinary amount of time. There are murderers out there that are going to get out in less time. So, yeah. But like I said, and it seems to be like everything that comes out of, like I said, brings out all these fake articles, like Reason does a great job of following the whole, yes, they were, they were definitely trying to make an example out of him, to crush anyone trying to make us of, of the side of that, but I think, but they're, the way they found Ross, I think they just got kind of like, to me, they got lucky. And the other thing is, when it comes down to it, if you're running a multi-million dollar drug Tor dark website, why the heck would you be in a major city? I'm sorry, I'd probably go in a major city probably to run, I, I wouldn't, I would try to go to somewhere where if anyone's new and unusual, it's a weird place to be at. I'm sorry, that's where I would run it. So, and I probably definitely wouldn't be in the United States.
Fuck town in Indiana.
Right, yeah, I would be in some BFE town in Indiana or some other state where it's like, huh, there's an, this is way too many weird people in this town, right? Or you can just like, wow, you know, like, something like, it would just look unusual that there's too many new people, too many new faces, right? Or that the town like is on ease because they've seen these new faces and they, and everyone else knows what's going down, you know? They know what's going down. So, you know, like I said, like, there's, there's tons of different copycats, the Silk Road 3.0, there's some other copycats that are out there, so if you go out there, check. But there, none of them still has the same, kind of like when Napster first went down, there's all kinds of copycat and things that went out there, but not the same as Napster. Indiana itself is not completely BFE. You still have Indianapolis and Indianapolis, okay? You know, there's, you know, there's a lot of places in Indianapolis, there's a lot of new people show up, but because there's so many conventions that happen here. Indianapolis hosts tons of different conventions, so there's tons of new people coming in and out. But if you go out to like Fortville or Danville or, okay, there's a lot of Vills, when you get outside, like Shelbyville and, okay, all right. It's the beginning of end of nowhere. It's not quite the middle of nowhere, but it's, it's getting close to the middle of nowhere. All right. So, yeah, that's, yeah. Anything else everyone want to know about Ross before I move on?
No, I just wanted to get caught up.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's basically what the case is. Lynn Ulbricht does produce some good speeches and she tries to keep everyone like up to date on it. It's a webcomic I listen to, Six Gun Mage. His webcomics are amazing and he does this one, he does Misfile Comics, and his gun reviews are amazing, by the way. Sorry, FreeRoss.org. Since you guys look at.
Free pages on that?
The what? For, no, 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 but he's a webcomic that I follow and I will pimp out for the life of me, because I love his comic. His gun reviews are actually the best. To perfectly honest, I think he should stop doing the webcomic and just do gun reviews, because his gun reviews are really spot on and amazing. And he really, you know, like missed his calling. He should just review guns. Like he's reviewed guns of like, I've never wanted to own that gun, but his review made me want to own one. All right, so like, most things, like if you want to know about Ross, you can go to FreeRossUlbricht.com. There's a lot of cool speeches from Lynn Ulbricht, because like the family's very involved with it, they understand the case. There's also like different, Play a Game with Ross, which is, okay, that's hilarious. That's going to get me, that guy, I didn't know that guy was there. All right, so anyways, the Free Ross Tango, it was a nice art piece there, art piece. You can get on Play, Play a Game with Ross, there's basically like Derek Slope made this program, so basically Ross will draw things and draw artwork and he'll put it up there and you can donate to the campaign by removing different like art piece, like those yellow sticky pieces off, so you can get, you know, see more of the art piece. When it first started out, people like get in it real quick and put names in it and like do ad work on it, it's really cool, you know? And it all goes to help like try to support Ross. Which, other thing with Ross is like a lot of people don't understand is that he's also in the, inside like the prison, but they won't allow him access to basically to the internet. Hey Ratface. Yeah, they won't allow Ross to have any access to internet, which digs.
I wanted to give one little disclosure, beware of Ratface.
Who's Ratface?
Uh, Ratface is my close friend and co-host of the Armchair Politics Podcast.
Okay, okay, all right, all right, I'm just going to get this band hammer warmed up real quick. It's ready to go. All right, it's armed up, ready to go. All right.
I'm going to go ahead and drop out while there's a break here because I'm about to have to go, so.
Okay. Okay. See you, Stone. All right, Paul, you want to jump in? Paul?
Oh?
He said, thanks Ratface, thanks for behaving. I like it when people behave.
He's being a good boy.
Being a good boy, that's good, good, good old Ratface. Sorry, like, I was actually in part of this, this seems awful, this is going to seem out of place, but I was in this, this one game and sending Paul a message to jump in. All right, I was in this World of Darkness game, played into the World of Darkness by What Wolf Publishing Company, and we were playing a bunch of different, this thing called Changing Breeds, it was like werewolves, basically wer, all these different wercreatures. I played a werewolf bear, it was a wer, black bear. Yeah, anyways. Because they wouldn't let me, because they wouldn't let me be a grizzly bear and I was very upset about that. So I decided to make everyone uncomfortable in being a black bear. Oh yeah, but by the way, being black in a LARP, it's very cool to be, make people uncomfortable like that. One time, I was in the, we were playing, playing in one LARP that was based in, like the, the thing was like based in the early 1900s and we're in Atlanta and I was like, you know what, I am going to be a former slave owner, screw it, this is what I'm playing, this is my vampire, you know? And I would never like, and I would just wear like these white robes. Just to make, everyone completely uncomfortable. It was awesome, it was awesome. You've never seen so many white people sweat, it was awesome.
No, 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 it's not the hat, I just have a pinhead.
How dare you? Just, just left church, I just left church singing in the choir. All right, Paul going once, Paul going twice, Paul three times. All right, Paul, that was your shot. All right, I'm moving on to your article. Actually, I won't, I'll move on to this one with Intel CPU stuff, with what I've been wanting to talk about, like, oh, 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 we may get super duper wall fan to jump in. I don't know how long it should take to get home. Is that Ratface a Kami? I don't, usually we to use the helicopter purity test to test to see if they're a Kami or not. But anyways.
He is a classical liberal in the Sargon sense, if that helps.
That's too Kami for me. Kami, Kami of Akkad, officer. All right, you're fine, you're fine. Close enough to Sargon, it's fine. I don't agree with Sargon Akkad of everything, but I agree with most and I would love to have a beer with him.
He sounds like a lovely jovial man.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, yeah, I think it, I think it'd be great to have a beer with Sargon. Of course, there's a lot of people I would love to have a beer with, just to really like pick their brain, you know? Like, I would love to have a beer with Richard Spencer, just to pick his brain, because, and try to get him to see if he could convince himself that he's a dirty stinking leftist. And see if I could get him to drop the right term. You know, it's like, it's like, yeah, you're an authoritarian leftist, just admit it, just admit it, just admit that you are. Drop the right, you're not right, you're just a leftist who like guns, but you only want your people to have guns, just like leftists do.
Literally communist.
Yes, yes he is, yeah, yeah. That's so much authoritarian and it's, and it's gross when people, and that's why I always hate like, well, alt-light and I look at, when, when people say like, well, I'm alt-light and I look at that and like, no, you're just a Republican in the truest sense of the word. You're not alt-anything.
Well, I.
Also, if you could, we gotta get you, I think if we keep doing this, we gotta get you a better Bluetooth headset. Or new batteries.
It's like a. J lab.
The what?
It's like a thirty dollar J lab.
Oh wow, man, maybe it's just the chicken wire that uh, or maybe it's all the other uh products in the um area where you work, it's probably messing with the um signal.
I will admit, um, the actual signal in this building, cause it is literally a tin roof. So, even though I have AT&amp;T.
Yeah.
And I get amazed anywhere else. In this build, it's absolute garbage.
Yep, 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 yeah, I'm, yeah, that's I'm thinking it's probably like, yeah, more of the everything like around you that is like messing it up with with you and the and the things that you sell. You know, all the batteries, the batteries, all the batteries. Alright, oh, we forgot Sunset Shimmer in the room. It does kinda look like we got a fight going on, so meltdown inspector, alright, so. You know, I remember when I first saw this going on and. Bad, and it was like almost like a bad. Nightmare, okay, this whole Intel CPU, whenever I first saw it, right, I was like, come on, it can't be this bad, it can't be this awful, but alright, so, um. And it is, and it is awful and it and it's basically affects every CPU from nineteen ninety, every ins- sorry, Intel base CPU, well. Technically Spectre hits every freaking CPU and Meltdown hits every Intel CPU from nineteen ninety-five to current generation. Except, except for ITanium. And pre-two thousand thirteen Atom processors, so all of us that kept on to your two thousand twelve uh netbooks, woo, put a little um. Um, you can throw that um good old fashioned Puppy Linux on it and you've got a machine that's safe, so like. Your Linux won't help you because it's gotta be doing something now with the board, and so basically what's happening. It's the main thing that allows Intel to stomp AMD, not main thing, but one of the main things that allows Intel to stomp AMD into the ground. On performance is their whole of the CPUs, it's an aspect of it that allows them to. Uh magically. Perceive what you're gonna do next and just guess. And break based on patterns and it's kinda just and it brings up for you to grab. Problem with this, right, there's no security on it, of course, they never thought anyone could get down there. And when you think someone can't get to something, hackers will prove you wrong every freaking day of the week.
You would think they would notice already.
Yeah, but well, the thing is, right, if. But the stuff in Intel is so locked down, right, and they're so I it uh in their cone chamber, right? How many times you really think they allow someone to one see their source code and go look over it, how many times you really think Intel allows that? And if they do let someone allow it, they're probably all in-house guys.
True.
You know, it's like, we're only gonna allow these people to look at it, we're gonna edit so close source, you only get this much time at the bare source code of how this this processor works. Cause a lot of stuff down there, that's all trade secrets, you know? And that Al Pacino is pretty good, anyways. So, what this meltdown inspector does is they basically. They be able to, well, sorry, meltdown, what it does is gets down there and be able to see, be able to trick the the PC. On that um auto magically guessing and send that information out to non-administrative users. So you're basically using that to get past and get behind all kinds of like. Um, roll, roll access control, um, and just bleed through your hypervisor, your VM, everything, every freaking thing that's running on it and it's. It's it's creepy and scary and it's nothing blocks it, it could be running Linux, so what, no one cares, doesn't care, doesn't care, cause it deals with your CPU. Um, now there's gonna be a patch, huh?
It's uh, it's like it's deep in there.
Yeah, it's deep in there and it's the CPU, so like even my my precious Core iFive, my other Core iFives, my other Core iFive. So the only thing in the house that's protected from that is um the uh AM, my wife's AMD gaming machine over here, where she started laughing like, haha, AMD wins, I'm like. Which I hate working on her machine because every time I work on a machine, it's, I built that machine with Bitcoins back in the day. It really sucks, really sucks, anyways, yes, into, yeah, see, the the tinfoil hat side of me likes to believe that the um. That a lot of these, this Intel break since from having for so long, that it had to be. That could be a CIA backdoor considering those from ninety-five on and considering that back in the day when the crypto wars were started, the crypto wars were going on. The Clipper Chip fiasco was failing. Alright, backup, to people like Stone or people who are younger than me, crypto wars. The crypto wars were the United States government was watching cryptography going through and. Try, and people were trying to get the right to do cryptography, to encrypt things, the right to encrypt. And the federal government didn't want it because they need, they wanted like, well, what if like there's a terrorist or there's something like that or a bad actor? We need to be able to get, we need to put backdoors in this thing so we can get past this cryptography. Um, hi EC factum, hi there, love the phrasing, the tinfoil hat side of me. Yeah, the tinfoil hat side of me like, so like the the, so the crypt, like so the federal government, right? Even like still to this day, still classify cryptography as a weapon. So like I tell anyone like, you know, like, so like it's it's regulated as a weapon, so like, you know, if you export um thing like cryptography or like anything that can do crypto. Technically, you're dealing in arms, so awesome there. So, and the Clipper Chip was meant to go on the board to um global, yes, uh, the Clipper Chip was meant to go on board to collect key, key commands, send them out and collect things. The Clipper Chip never worked, never really went anywhere, right? Be, and I'm thinking like, why didn't it go anywhere, maybe they found this thing out from Intel? So if they needed to get into a bad actor's machine, they'd have this aspect of it. And. I wanna say that the United States government or state agency has the capacity to come up with that idea, to implement this idea, have the brains, the money, the know-how to do this. But at the end of the day, this is the federal government talking about, they're not smart enough, they don't plan enough to do this, this is way too much forethought for them. It really to me, I don't, at the end of the day, it just looks like an honest to goodness mistake or oopsie from Intel. Because we all know that the best and brightest hackers do not work for the United States government, that is what everyone tries to think they're just like, this is where the best and brightest work, you know? The best and brightest work in private industry and get paid big and gets paid big for it. You know, like um, uh, like uh, let's just see like that one hacker with the first one to hack the PlayStation two and put Linux and. To hack the PlayStation two, to hack the PlayStation three, the first guy to, the guy who first cracked the um Joe Brook the iPhone, just showed it was possible. And then now he's out making out of like um, making cheap um autonomous cars, that type of guy, he, trust me. He's probably one of the best hackers in the country. And he does not work for the United States government and believes in open sourcing everything, awesome, it's like all like that whole, that's why I make I get a. Have issue with a lot of stuff that Tesla does because it's so closed source and they're like this autonomous driving thing where this guy does the exact same thing and he's and his idea is like. I wanna be able to make an, you know, autonomous car out of a nineteen ninety-nine Toyota Camry, okay? Because that's what, you know, that's what it's really gonna come down to. Alright, I've been talking for a while, anyone else wanna say anything?
I was gonna say. I'm gonna give big ups to AMD and it's uh catching my own computer on fire anytime it runs. But, I take that back.
AMDs run hot, maybe one incredibly hot.
Especially over.
Yes, they have driver issues sometimes, they're not as fast. But, you know, but the. Dealing with this issue with Intel, they probably won't, you know. Well, I, when I build my next PC, will I go Intel or AMD, I don't know, I don't know yet. I know I'm getting close to finally like outliving the usefulness of my um, I I wanna upgrade, um, things are breaking on. How do you break it, how do you jailbreak a self-driving car? There are. Rice fee, yes, yes, rice fee, um, the, or re- is it reese fee, whatever, rice fee, but yeah, the Joe break, the first one to Joe break the iPhone. But Joe break the self-driving car, basically he gets in there, reverse engineers a lot of the different things, like programs that like. These huge auto manufacturers put into it and then just like huh, I'm gonna do that with everyday parts, get it set up there and put the schematics outline in open source, it's. It's basically how you do it, because anything the auto manufacturer world or most can, most. Companies do to besides like IT and um technology companies, most of the time, they can't really lock things down, a lot of things can be reversed engineered out of it. Um, it's very hard to keep people out of things unless you, this is what you pay money and you concentrate on, even like the. It took the auto industry, I think it was. Three years ago that they stopped, um, that finally fixed fixed a hole in your key fobs. Basically, your key fob, every time you hit that key fob button, you release a code out of it, right? Well, what people found out, right, is that it releases the same code each time. So when people would hit the button, if you had an antenna that could read the same frequency, your uh transponder key would go at, they could pick up the code. And if they could pick up the code, they could take it and translate it back out and kick it out another antenna and use it to unlock your thing. Now, granted, they found a way to do it to make a thing with like a rolling code, so it just uses codes over and over again, which is awesome, but the problem is. Is that people will sit and sometimes just hit the unlock or lock button multiple times. Well, the car will null and void codes after turn times after receiving one, but the thing is, if you've hit it in your pocket, right, see if you can get one, well, you're producing codes, right? So you could intercept these pre-codes from somebody as they send them up and each code would be different and it's. Alright, I'm not gonna, I'll try to get back into that, anyways, does anyone have any questions about meltdown inspector or you really want me to like open up these white papers and go into it, cause I'll do that? Yeah, yeah, cause I got the question, um, am I affected by the vulnerability and certainly, yes, yes, you are. Uh, this is meltdownattack dot com, can I detect if someone has exploited meltdown inspector against me? Probably not, cause exploitation does not leave any traces in traditional log files. Um, quick question, when talking about the political, political on Twitch or any platform for that matter, how much sense does it make to dwell on the current state of things? Which is limitations on legit information sources rather than a state of ought to be and hopefully finding some code consensus there to set a baseline for what is to be done rather than this thing is going wrong. And and what's the difference between the two, um, between meltdown and specter? Spectre tricks different, um. Okay, alright, 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 I'm going to set these apart, so I don't get these, hopefully the chat won't take these too far away, alright, I'm gonna hit, try to hit one of these one at a time, alright. The, it's good to talk about the current state of things just to get a baseline of different things and then try to talk about how the baseline of. This is where things are and this is where we'd like to move things to and this is where things were going on in the past. The, it it takes, it, to me, it's, I don't really try to dwell on the current state of things, I just more like to talk about it and like things we like, to only just like mostly create a. Sort of discourse around the state of things, uh. Let's see, I hope that answers your question rather than state on ought to be and hopefully finding some code for consensus there, yeah, I I think people can find a consensus on what they like to see in the future and moving forward. But I think that goes more into like the way projects are done, like um plan, act, do, review, I think when um politicians or any type of state agency or things happen. People, um, people have planned it, um, things are doing, um, the people have acted and now we're just kinda like in the review phase to for continuous improvement, the pursuit, the pursuit of perfection. Of basically society at large, so you have to talk out the current state of things to be able to plan your next move. So that's why I like talking about that stuff. Uh, what's the difference between the two, um? In the short term. Meltdown is the quick and like it's the main one that's everyone's got a patch, Spectre is a little bit more. It's a little bit more to me, it looks like a little more difficult to pull off, um. Because what Spectre does, it does that same thing that meltdown does, but it kinda does it to get different, the op- um, different programs to release different things out. So why the program recalls and things thing. I understand that, it's okay, I'll take all, but like back to Spectre, uh, Spectre, what it does is try to get different programs, so as it call. As the program culture thing and meltdowns looks to me more based on operating system and more uh networks uh and going through the hypervisor. Yeah, yeah, Spectre's more, yes, it's, yeah, cause. Did I get that backwards, did I say spec? Did I get backwards? That's, alright, cause like one could go through the hypervisor and do it through like virtual like uh like if you got like a VPS on one, one you have to uh uh. So is everyone affected? Yes, everyone is, everything that uses, yes, everyone's affected, does mostly with Intel chips, but it also does things with your um, um. If you use anything, they're using like a, like a Qualcomm, like a Snapdragon, like a lot of ARM chips, so even my, let's see. Where to put that thing? Everything is basic. Most modern processors, period, meltdown does more with Intel CPUs, but I think I got that backwards now, I think um, but Spectre also works on um your, even like your Raspberry Pi ARM chips. My Beagle Bone Black, which is in a case in the basement, that's effective, I've got a Beagle Bone Black that runs Cali in a, um, it's a little um. Lunchbox, which is really cool, so it looks like a little, anyways, it's, that's what it does, it's, it looks like a lunchbox, so it looks like I'm just having lunch. I hope that, Adam, did I get that right or did I say that backwards? Humor spawned, alright. So everyone is affected, yes, uh, and how is this now being uncovered, security researchers find things all the time, it's just when they got to it. They get to things and they uh, they basically just find things, when they find things and then things pop up, um. Sometimes or they look at different things like or get different rumors of things or they try to, a lot of security researcher researchers will try to. I noticed they get things from like, hey, I noticed this thing, this thing was weird, can you look at this? From like a, or uh, let's say, um, I was doing a um penetration on something, right? Or just doing a security research on something for like some personal I'm using in like a business, like we're using a wifi thing. Kinda like how crack was discovered, I'm just trying to, and you know, like I'm towing through ways trying to break into like my own wifi service, I can't find anything and they find something weird. It worked once for me, it worked twice, but I only have my equipment to test, you can give it to like a security researcher, like, hey, is there a flaw in the firmware thing of that I'm working on? Or did I find something huge and big and people can take that type of stuff and people can just run with it? And that's how security researchers just get on things and just go find stuff. I'm trying to look it up now to see if I got it backwards, it's messing with me. Okay, I did have that backwards, meltdown does, yeah, yeah, I said it right, first time I said it right was meltdown was more hardware, inspector uses through the program like the hypervisor, sorry. So yeah, and it does affect everything, as you can see like Cisco, your Android devices, everything is freaking affected by this until you get an update and the biggest problem with. A lot of Android devices is if your Android device does not get updates all the time. You may have to. You know, you either move to a different um. Android like I'm using, uh, what is it, what's after um? Shoot, not Cygenma, what did Cygenma move to, what is it, lineage, lineage OS, right, it's lineage, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I, my child screaming at me all day, I really haven't slept, um, when I left Wall, slept for like four hours, got up and I've been moving up ever since. Got up and I've been moving up ever since, so. I'm probably even going to try to crash and sleep right after this. It's, I know it's bad to even drink a beer, but I've been wanting this beer for over a year and I'm getting it. Oh, that tastes good. Alright, do they answer any questions? It's outdated, but oops, my message got blocked. Uh, well, don't say blocked things, red face. Alright.
I knew it was him. I knew it was gonna be him.
Sweet. Glad you. Alright, anyone um, alright, so anyone have any questions?
How does this?
Not for me.
Well, Sunset Shimmer? Sunset? Hello?
Are memes safe from all this? Are the memes protected?
Memes? Um, let's see. Private meme that you're working on are not protected, okay? Unless they're encrypted, but even then, if they're inside, you don't really know if they've got your encryption key and got that there, so. What's scary about this is like it, one, because you're finding vulnerabilities, like they're finding ways like people are attacking air gap machines. But this, you know, like, cause like. Meltdown affects if someone's got physical access. Specter, it's more of a someone can like, it's more like you're attached to the internet. Which sucks. Um, so. One, this is, but the other thing was like, if you have physical access, something you're pwned anyways. But at least, you know, like, so like decryption is great, but if someone's already inside, already pwned the machine, the encryption does nothing. Unless you got hold disk encryption before it was set up, but that will only do things when the hard drive is encrypted, when the machine shut off. Not in sleep mode, so if you put in sleep mode, it's not encrypted. So the machines got shut off. So turns it all off. Does that make any sense?
Yeah.
So basically install.
Um, right now, um, switching to different operators won't help you, that won't help you. So basically just, um, I think I was reading a blog post and I can't remember the blog post, it was posted on the Discord chat. Um, Reinhold posted it in Discord chat in the tech talks, and somebody posted a great meme about it, it was like, the best thing to do right now is keep calm and carry on. Because everyone's affected, there's nothing you can do besides just disconnect yourself from the internet. And 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 putting your phone down. The what?
I was gonna say, oh, even.
I think right now, there there's um some Apples, Apple machines have already received, I believe Apples have received their update. And Windows have got their update update this past Tuesday. And I believe the Linux community should get there sometime this week as well. And they're just more of a like a patchwork which will slow differently machines down. So I think I may also be in the market for a new laptop, which I hate being in the market for laptops. I hate laptops. It took me so long to really decide on that T four hundred. And now I with the aspect of having possibly having to get one, another one, I don't. I everyone's like, well, what do you mean? There's some cool laptops. My main thing is. I always feel laptops are something to be broken, something to be stolen, so I don't like spending a lot of money on laptops. I like to stay under two hundred dollars. And. Since and since I also like playing the Linux, it's like, well, I don't wanna pay for an operating system either, I'm gonna put Linux on it and just keep moving. Yeah, when it come, yeah, so that's that's my aspect of laptops. Um, so I I see cool laptops out there and I see and I want some of the ones that are like thousands of dollars and the I sevens. And all the USB three point O ports, but at the same time, it's like I got my desktop right here and it's, I need power here. I don't need power on the road. Usually if I'm on a laptop, I'm just viewing like webpages and. Dot uh, command lining into a network device. I don't need an I seven and command line into a network device. This is like, well, what if you hashing something? If I have to hash something with a laptop, I'm gonna be there a while anyways. Alright. Anything else?
The only thing a laptop should ever be used for is word processing on the go.
Okay, so. Next thing here we're gonna do, um. The Vermillion Parish teacher gets arrested for Vermillion Parish with school board meeting. Yes, it's my YouTube page. Yes, I like to look at, as you can clearly see, I like to look at Dragon Ball Z. And Dragon Ball Super, I I really uh, I, Super has brought me back into Dragon Ball. Um, this last episode with Vegeta, oh man, mm, mm, no spoilers, but mm, one hundred twenty-two. Oh, man. Go, go Vegeta.
Yeah, but again, we'll never get that through on my hand job.
Anyways, moving on, school teacher, I'm sure people have seen this around the net because this video is like number four trending on YouTube. And I barely wanted to talk about it, but I had Paul send it in, so I'm like, you know what, I'll talk about it anyways. I really don't like talking about things that everyone else is talking about. Um, one because I I figured like, hey, you've heard it from everywhere else, what I don't know what I'm gonna add to the conversation. Other than I think when I was watching this whole thing, I was like, wow, somebody asked for more government, got more government. I know, I know, being crass about it, but let's go with the article. This is posted on Hawaii News Now dot com.
So it happened in uh Louisiana.
I know, but this is the link you sent me.
Well, it's the one that Hawaii Libertarian Party posted.
I know, but okay, now contents to this too is that it's Louisiana, okay? We're talking about the same police department, okay, not the same police department, but the same culture police department. That produced the police department that said, well, we kept questioning this rapist after he asked for a lawyer dog. And we couldn't produce him a lawyer dog, so we kept questioning him, cause the guy said lawyer dog. You know, yeah, lawyer dog, give me a lawyer. So I'm not surprised. Now, I'm not disparaging everyone from Louisiana, lot of good people came from Louisiana. Jessica.
I'm sure if we think long and hard, we can think of one eventually.
I can think of one. It's okay. And the cool thing is, hey, LP convention in Louis and New Orleans.
Yeah.
Of course, I could think of better things to do in New Orleans and spend that type of money for, but I'm not, now I'm not, I'm just, like I said, I don't, I'm gonna stop. I'm gonna leave the LP alone, not LP member, will not complain about the LP, I'm gonna move on from that.
Everybody's contribution is valued.
Yep, it sure is, sure is. But the like I said, there's only one or two things, there's only two things that'll get me to join the LP, okay, two things. One, Nice runs for chair, I will sign up and I will vote. Two. Dear leader demands it, you know, and you gotta do what dear leader demands, you know, and he and he won't do that, so I'm I'm fine with that, these two conditions. Let's see, alright, so a teacher was removed from our school board meeting and placed into handcuffs Monday night. Cameras caught it all as Desaya Haregrave was arrested. Kinda name is that, was arrested after she spoke up during a uh, um, public comment, her issue, the superintendent's new contract. A superintendent or any person in leadership getting any type of rate, this is a quote from uh, the thing, getting some raise, I feel like a slap in the face for teachers. Their cafeteria workers, I don't know why she brings those people up, or any other support staff we have. Okay, um, yeah, I don't know why she brought up the cafeteria workers, um, or support staff, they can go to more freely teachers. But um.
Please think of the children.
Yeah, and the, you know, the children, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, still better than Comifornia, yeah. Worst part about Comifornia is SoCal, that's the worst part. I gotta stop, I gotta, you know. And the and NorCal people, anyways, so after being called uh, on a second time when a city marshal stepped in. Haregrave left the meeting but remained in the hallway. Superintendent Jerome Poyo said no charges were filed against Haregrave. It isn't clear if the deputy marshal was acting on his own accord or if he was called onto the Haregrave to be removed, but a removal did not go unnoticed. What happened here tonight, uh, the way that females are treated in Vermillion Parish. I've never seen a man remove this, uh, removed from this room, said one woman after meeting, after the meeting. Never have seen a man removed from this room. I I I doubt that, I'm sure several men have been bounced from every room. I, you know, like the the idea that no man has ever been removed, I was like, probably never removed so peacefully, I'm sure if it. You know, if any man decided to speak up the way she did, even if they're like a darker shade, they probably had been taged. Anyways, back to the article, Haregrave has yet to comment on a removal, neither has the city marshal of office or which was employed from Michigan. And that's from this article from the Hawaii News, um, it was published on June ninth, twenty eighteen ten fifty-seven, then updated again at twelve oh one on June. You know, at twelve one PM. And of course, add cancer. Alright, so let's watch this, you know, this cancerous video. You know, let's get started, shall we? And the whole thing kicks around on six seventeen, this is when it gets good. Oh, oops. That's English as a, what is that, English as a um, uh, what, you know, early learning assistance or what is ELA? Anyone know what ELA?
I would have assumed, I would have assumed kinda like a.
English language arts. What the heck is English language arts? It's filled of English language arts is diverse and always changing discipline. Alright, I, okay, that's not the issue we're gonna deal with right now. But we're just gonna, oh, English language acquisition, okay, okay, is that for like people, is English language acquisition, is that for like people? Who um, like it's not English as the first language or that people are not, or we're talking about English? Just people just trying to uh, develop a better vocabulary. Jazz Guitar?
I'm gonna go with a solid, I don't know.
I'm gonna go with a solid, I don't know either, but I am curious and I will probably search for while this video is going. And um, I will unmute again. Well, that's me being a derp, derping here on cam.
Your balls are showing on stream.
Oh, no, my balls.
And the stream shut down, okay. I was gonna say the stream got shut down for balls.
Alright, so. Now, the the city council, right, the council is um. They're trying to do this weird like Roberts Rule, not Roberts Rule Order, but like this weird order thing where they're trying to like, well. You can't comment on that because we're not commenting about a raise. But they're commenting about a contract that includes a raise, but since they're not talking about the contract, right? They they can basically say you're not, you're not talking about what's on subject here, this is, that's that's sneaky, that's very underhanded and dirtbagish. Now granted, the superintendent didn't have a raise for like five years, but I'm sure that either, I'm um. I don't know if the teachers had a raise for the last five years, these other people didn't have five or eight years.
They had actually uh, had pay cuts.
Yeah, so it's kinda weird to have someone get a raise when your entire, everyone else has had a pay cut. And I I don't know why he decided to do this anyways, because if you look at this front row, right? If you ever see that front row, probably at VidCon with a sargon of cut, this, all these women here have that need to speak to the manager. Haircut or look, okay? That entire front row. I would give this front row anything they wanted just to get rid of them, okay? Okay, now this lady, she talked out of order, she could have been removed, okay, she was called upon, okay? Uh, thanks Jazz Guitar, Jazz Guitar sent a video, uh, not video, but a link. Alright, I'm gonna read this while this video is going. Thanks Jazz Guitar, you rock, I don't know who you are, but you rock. Okay, so like, alright, so the video here, right? Like he's getting removed, shutting her down for the simple fact that they're trying to say that she was talking out of turn, but. If we, I can, you know, you rewind it back to the six minute mark, you can watch them point and call on her, she was talking and discouraging for a minute, so. And they can't really tell, like officer went over on his own, on his own accord or someone issued him over to him. Judging one of the cops, I think the way his reaction and to do everything and you're kicking him out. I can kinda think like someone went to him, said it's like, hey, you should get around, you know, because, you know. That's a, it was a lot of work that was just placed on him, I'm sure he wouldn't do it if, you know, someone add to it because she wasn't being violent, she's being orderly, she wasn't yelling, she wasn't screaming. And I'm sure working at like board meetings, she was acts are kinda peaceful.
I can't imagine that it wasn't somebody else uh, sticking the officer. On her in this situation because. You know, what, he doesn't care.
Right.
It's it's a meeting to have, he's just there to keep the peace, but.
Yep.
You know.
Yep, and we've seen, I've seen heated her things at IPS school board meetings or Indianapolis uh, city council meetings. People get more out of hand than this, this woman is tame comparison, in comparison.
No, absolutely.
You know, especially if someone like they mess up something on like a like parlay procedure and someone calls someone on, so they have to stop. That person gets heated, but they have to sit down, which is great to watch.
The superintendent can't even look at her when she's talking.
Oh, so the superintendent did was not looking, I looking away, so it's probably was looking over, speculation, of course, speculation. Sorry, my mouse has been like messing up, um, I like to apologize for me, my mouse, um. Apparently, I um, well, the D humidifier broke, the big one that we had, so I had to go to like a smaller one. And I created such static attrition in my UG boots that I actually zapped my mounts, you know, and this mouse doesn't have no issues. It's a Mad Cat's mouse and you know how Mad Cats stand by quality?
Sure, blame it on your equipment, not user error.
It is, because you know how Mad Cats is the utmost top tier quality, quality.
I can't hit, I can't hear my shots because of my mouse.
First off, um, with my my Mad Cat's mouse, which like I said, is top tier quality, okay, alright, top tier. God tier, actually, god tier. Yes.
Which one you got?
Uh, the Rat seven, the old school one, the weights in it. Which I like to do the whole Rock Lee thing at Lampard to take the weights out, it's awesome.
Such a nerd.
So it beats me like, oh. Time to take, time to take the weights off, you screw the weights out, yep.
I will say.
Now, see, this woman here, did you see this woman? She goes, she just stands straight up, I have a comment, I have a freaking comment, right? You know, she was not recognized, yet they let her stand up there. Now, what's going out here, like what's going out here, right? She's, um, this officer's trying to put the lady in handcuffs. So what I'm thinking, to me personally, from every interaction that I. So what I'm thinking, to me personally, from every interaction that I've had police officers or watched from different videos. I'm guessing what's happening out here now, outside that we don't see off camera, is contempt of cop. It's that she's questioning his authority. Off camera. Yeah, which possibly, I'm speculating, that cop has probably went out there and probably asked her, hey, I need to, you know, she's probably doing something. Possibly, and asked her to leave the building. She could have said something to him. Uh, or wouldn't leave, refused to leave, refused a lawful order, and he had to step, and he decided to step in, or something made him step in. That also is speculation happened. But I wanna believe that it's probably contempt of cop, but I'll keep going. And, and let's, you want to comment on something real quick?
No, my, my guess is that, granted, you can't see what happens, but, uh. It doesn't seem to me that, you know, if it were a simple refusing to follow the lawful order. That he would have escalated it the way he will, as you'll just see in a few moments here. Uh. It had to be something personal that got under his skin, and I think that this will show that it's really unprofessional. Of the cop in this situation.
Yeah, could be, yeah. Um, just like Jazz Guitar, yeah, might be po, yeah, could be policy of the department that once he got, like, once so, if someone is removed. From those buildings, they need to be removed from property, and she was trying to hang out in the hallway. That also could also have happened. Thanks, thanks, yeah. I remember Jazz Guitar earlier, but great points. Freaking troll cameraman, he needs to know how to walk faster. Alright, alright, let's, let's, let's rewind that tape. Alright, just gonna slow it down, bring it down to speed. Huh?
Truly toxic masculinity.
Physically removed. Oh, so she was on the ground. Now, I don't know if she hit the ground, she could have slipped, um, she could have. He probably like pushed her in, tried to handcuff her, like, or she was, because she was clearly like not wanting to be touched by this police officer, which. I can understand it. No one wants to be touched. Does it sound, I'll grab, I certainly think I. I don't wanna sound like a police apologist, I'm giving this cop all these asks, but I'm, I'm doing it as a person, he's a person still, first and foremost. He's a person, he's a human freaking being, and I wanna, you know, people are beating on him, so I felt bad, I feel bad for him. So that's what I'm doing, not because he wears this uniform, I just wanna point that out. Yeah, she, he's still trying to get those handcuffs locked in. And, and it looked like reality finally set in, those handcuffs are going on her, right? Those handcuffs are going on, so she finally started to run hunting. Yeah, a lot of people do fall when they try to be restrained because they're kinda like, yeah, I don't know why people do that, it's what people do. Um, I've never been placed in handcuffs, and if I was placed in handcuffs, I would not particip, I would not, um. Participate in my kidnapping, I would lie down on the ground. Of course, if I was being arrested, they, this guy would probably sit around and call like five more guys, and I'd get tased, if I'm honest, if we're honest. Not because I needed it, I just, just because that would happen.
Just yell out, don't tase me, bro.
Don't tase me, bro. Yeah, like I said, I wouldn't, like, I'm not gonna resist, but I'm also not gonna like walk out, so they'll probably need five guys to pick me up. I'm not gonna lie, I'm just gonna sit down, which, which is, will classify as, uh, resisting arrest, but I'm still gonna do it. I'm not a statis, I am not a statis. I'm stating facts.
Self-preservation is not statism.
Okay, now. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So they walk her out, they put her, and they walk her out, get her in a car, whole, everyone comes out there, now. Uh, I will tell you this, right? The, this police officer, right? This has to be like, this police officer, because you can tell like, you know, it's a small town. Because you can hear them audibly screaming, everyone get back, because there's a lot of people getting close, like, uh, like very concerned with the situation. Um. But, you know, the, the other thing is also goes to show you that a lot of people still like stayed back, respected his orders. And like basically like kept the peace on their own. Not a cop lover, not a cop lover, not a cop apologist, just analyzing the situation from. Not, not trying like, uh, just trying to analyze what I, what you can see here. Um, uh, do I feel like the cop probably escalated too far? Yeah, because he could have just like, you know, you need to leave, you need to leave, you need to go. Um, do I feel like she should, uh, cause she did eventually did get arrested, she get bonded up the next day. Uh, do I feel, uh, the, the city council, the, the school board, they didn't press any charges? Do I feel that he should arrest her? No. Do I feel like he should have put handcuffs on her? I personally, I don't think the police off, I don't think police should put handcuffs on anyone who complies with orders and are not violent. I'm sorry, if it was like what's for their safety, yeah, but if you're, if they're complying and not, and you're not, you know, violent or anything. I think the handcuffs are, are, are kinda stupid and pointless, you know? And it might persuade more non-violent offenders to just be more passive and just go with you. It's like, it's like, but they could do things, they have to be put on here, they, they escape, and I'm like, come on. Then what are you really, then do they really need to be arrested then? If they're not violent, they're not gonna hurt anybody, and they're complying, maybe you should just write them a fine, or let them go on their merry ways. Okay? I just how I feel, um, so like I said, yeah, you can see everyone going out. And you can hear them yell, get back from everybody. This is the slowest walking cameraman. What's her name? I'm gonna let this video play out and get a beer. Alright, so yeah, he gave her many like, uh, orders to leave, um. I do wanna recommend like, uh, uh, this cop did kinda, kinda. He did keep his cool, because if you notice, a lot of cops, I'm gonna give credit where credit is due, a lot of cops, when surrounded like this, with this many people. Right? They get very agitated, right? This is when you usually see a cop start, and like if you watch a lot of cop block videos or just cop awareness videos. A lot of cops, when they're surrounded like this, they get very agitated, they're yelling, they're escalating things by pulling, you know, like, even like grabbing. Like putting, going, like, not pulling their gun, but, you know, yes, it is also a scary place to be, because you have to understand that you're taking someone out there. Um, that people don't want arrested, right? So. This day here, this cop is very calm, and he's very, he's more calm than most police officers are, are in this situation. Okay? Um, not that bad, I sound like a freaking cop apologist right now, I feel bad, but I'm not apologizing, this is, that's what's going on, that's what I'm seeing, okay? It's what I'm freaking seeing on the screen, and it really looks like this, so, it's, to me, it really does look like someone from the board told this guy to remove this woman from the building. She refused to leave, so she, but he had to go and follow, like, she needs to be removed as policy, he, she needs to be removed. Whether she was breaking policy or not, that's needed to be said, and it can go into court, because personally, she wasn't breaking any rules of the forum. But someone, so someone had to ask her to, that she needs to be removed. Because he is surrounded on all sides. He's got a gentleman behind him with his hands in his pockets, okay? Car to the right of him, so he can't go to his right, go, go to his rear, got the person in front of him. You know, that's a, to me, that's, that's a scary place to be. That is, that is, that would be scary if you're trying to do stuff like that. But I also probably wouldn't put myself in this situation, I probably would have got her out of the building, this is what I would have wanted. And I told him, and I brought her to the parking lot and told her like, hey, I'll uncuff, you know, if you just leave now. We can just, you know, like, just squash it, but that's Harry, that's Harry, that's my purpose of society, but this guy's dealing with different rules that I don't agree with.
Well, I will say that he's probably a lot calmer, because he has been in this situation for, probably from the start of the meeting. And has, it's a meeting at a school in Louisiana. Like, granted, it's Louisiana, but it's also at a school. He's probably not worried about somebody concealed carrying. Especially somebody that would be going to a school board meeting.
True, yeah, 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 he's, yeah, yeah, you're definitely correct about that. And you wish like a lot of police officers also have that peace of mind too, when it comes about different things, you know? So, uh, is he wrong, is he wrong about some other things? Yeah, morally wrong, yeah, but at the same time, I, I give him credit for. You know, not doing the things that you would think to see on a typical cop, uh, video of someone getting arrested. I will give him credit for that too. Pros and cons, he's not good, he's not evil, there's pros and cons to this situation. I, I don't see him as a devil or a demon, a devil, demon, or, or an angel in this situation.
There are two main things that I wanna say here.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I, I really do appreciate, because you're taking a much more nuanced approach than just about any other. Libertarian that I have seen talk about this some, or this particular incident. Uh, you are definitely trying to find the good actions by the police officer.
Mm-hmm.
For what they are. I really do appreciate that. Uh, and my second thing is, this is why local government matters.
Yes.
This meeting was over a school board deciding to increase the pay of the superintendent.
Mm-hmm.
In spite of the fact that they've been cutting back pay in other areas.
Yes.
The, the person who was escorted out.
Mm-hmm.
Was there to speak their mind, not even in a partisan setting. But they were basically shut down by the people with power in this situation. How do you go about? Affecting any sort of change when simply speaking your mind gets you walked out by a man with a gun?
Right. Which is like the biggest like thing for this whole, yeah, yeah, this whole thing, it's, yeah, because she was called on by the board. She was not, she was, you know, she was asked to, she, she asked permission to speak, she waited till she was given permission, right? And then, 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 then this happened. They escalated, someone had to call her over to get her removed. You know, it's, and that's like the biggest takeaway from this whole thing. The police, that cop, he was doing, you know. Could he, could have did something, yeah, but that's like my moral, that's the moral libertarian utopia world, you know? He would have walked her out to the parking lot and like, alright, you're good. Must state, yeah, must state, yeah, or, um. But. You were right, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a, uh. And it's a, and did you see like when she was talking about earlier, like in the video, when she was talking about, like the state, the, the classroom sizes? Like, the classrooms are twenty nine people, like, whoa, a lot of people are like, what's twenty nine people? I know, it's twenty, she's pro, she sees seven, she sees seven periods of twenty nine people each, okay? Simple, the cop is merely a tool, the problem is the system that ordered her removal. Correct, yes, yeah. The, uh, yeah, the cop was merely as a tool, and like, and that's one, I do feel bad for cops and stuff like that, when they are used as tools by people. When they're mainly used as like, like horrible NPCs, and not allowed to think and not allowed to use judgment. That's when I usually feel bad for cops.
Absolutely, most cops are tools, I agree.
Tell you the truth, like in Indiana, like I think I've, I think I've heard, I think I get along more often with Lawrence Police Department and the Indiana State Police. Tell you the truth.
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, outside of, uh, Indianapolis, I've had nothing but good experiences.
Yep. I M P D suck, I hate dealing with them, I refuse to do, oh, you know.
They're terrible, they're. The very first interaction I had with one was one on a frickin' power trip for no foreseeable reason, it's.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And they don't do anything, you know?
Yeah.
Virtually every car theft goes unsolved in the city, because, uh.
Indianapolis doesn't have, Indianapolis doesn't have a car theft division anymore, they got rid of that. Yeah, we don't have that. You steal a car in Indiana, no one cares, no one cares, no one care, well, not Indiana, Indianapolis. Indianapolis should say, you steal a car in Indianapolis, you better hope your homeowner insurance or your car insurance covers that, cause if not. You're just screwed, so I like to back in, I like to put my loud car in behind the expensive cars. And then, um. So if you have to move one of the loud ones, it's gonna, you're gonna make a lot of noise. So that said, the RX eight is backed in, like the Subaru backs, backs to back with the RX eight and the, um. Jeep blocks the, um, Focus, so. And it was like, oh, but the, the Focus should cost, no, the Focus is newer and the Jeep is an old piece of junk, so, no one cares about that one. Um, here on the board is, um, I think it, uh, uh, Jazz Guitar sent us the US Department of Education for English Lart, uh, English Larb. English Language Acquisition State Grants. So it's a program that is designed to improve the education of limited English proficiency or LEAP children and youth. By helping them learn English and meet challenging state academic content and student academic achievement standards. So it's help, so it's just help kids who are falling behind in learning English in America, learn English. I like this type of program, hate how it's funded, I think more people need to learn how to use, uh, uh, you know, to, uh. To speak better English, or like to, uh, become more, uh, it's more proficient in their language that they use.
Yeah, so we have, we have less, uh, spangle after two and a half hours of podcasting.
Yeah, correct. The cop is part of the system, yes, cop is also part of the system, but it's a tool, you know, the tool is part of the system too. Granted, cops are given, uh, leeway and judgment, but a lot of the times, you know, they're also put on to. Uh, they have goals that they have to hit throughout the, um, throughout the month. And they are also, and a lot of, and they're also put in very weird awkward states. They are, are they part of the system? Yeah, yeah, they are, yeah. And I wish more police officers would use more of the discretionary abilities that they have. So if they believe a law is more unlawful or something like that, that they, I wish they had more issues to flake off different responsibilities. Yep. The council is also probably a tool, is considered as a tool too, but the councils have the ability to, um. To adjudicate or to create rules that, uh, that, that police officers and other people are to follow and to enforce. They have, uh, the police officers cannot, um, luckily, thankfully, the police officers can't get together, vote on laws. And then enforce also those laws. That's a scary concept. But yeah, so. That's like a lot of people don't understand, it's like when I, when I, because if a, if you're, because when I going through the school, get, yes, get rid of them all. Hey, you're speaking my language now, Jazz Guitar, I say get rid of them all. You know, like perfectly honest, you know, like when police officers say, hey, next time you're in trouble, call a crackhead. Hey, I know some crackheads, as long as I'm okay, if I can hold the crack, the crackhead will do everything I say, okay? Especially, he knows if I'm gonna dish out the crack, he'll do exactly everything I say. I need my gutters cleaned too, by the way, crackhead. I need my gutters cleaned too, by the way, crackhead. I think, I talked about, what about civil, civil asset forfeiture, civil forfeiture, um, last night, on the Tuesday show, which will be, I think, Tuesday show is released Thursday, right? And the-
Uh, I just listened to it earlier.
Oh, okay, so it's already released, okay. I'm off on a release schedule because, the whole Patreon schedule, because I can get the show in the Patreon group, and I listen to it there, this is, at the house all the time, I don't listen to my Android devices no more. So I'm a kind of out of the loop, especially, but yeah, so, I talked about civil asset forfeiture last night, especially when it comes to the drug war and the whole marijuana trade, uh, especially when, when it comes to the DEA agents, especially in states that have dispensaries, they, I, to me, I feel a lot of, like, police departments and the DEA agents likes to bust dispensaries when they have budget shortfalls, because they know they can go in there and go like, hey, our budget is short by three hundred thousand, I know a dispensary's gonna have that cash in their safe, cuz they, we know they're gonna have it because they can't put it in a bank. You know, that's where it's at. Um, let's see, where was we, uh, so yeah, anything else you wanna talk about, the Vermillion Parish teacher? Anyone have anything else?
No.
Or, or this concept, or this concept? Going once, going twice.
I think you've, uh, provided a lot of nuance for it.
Did I? I hope so, I hope I did. Ah, great, Dear Leader's here. I, I got a gif of him in the, uh, upper corner of me, so he's, like, he's always there, telling me the truth. So, I hope everyone loved the, um, this Wednesday show, I, hopefully next Wednesday, I plan on doing it again, I did, I did enjoy it. Um, apparently when I was on the other screen, we got two new followers, um, let me look those up and thank those two new followers we got here on, on the Twitch channel, on WallTwitch. Um, CircleCat113 and SuperFanStone, thanks for your follow on, on the Twitch, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, most of the Twitch channel, um, I'm gonna try to do the show here on Wednesdays, and do talk, um, in the future here, um, I'm gonna try to, I may do a, start doing VODcast or, um, IRL streaming on Fridays, um, after, um, six o'clock. Um, because at the end of the mu, around the end of the month here, um, let's see, around the nineteenth of this month, so that'd be next Friday, we, I'm gonna do an IRL stream to hopefully get some people together to launch something really cool, but I've gotta talk to, talk to Paul over it, make sure everything's planned out, make sure they know before I release anything, but I'll talk about it on Nick, hopefully able to talk about it on next Tuesday show, um. Yeah, Ratface, I'm glad you enjoyed the stream, I enjoyed it, I did have a lot of fun, I wish I didn't have the, the day that I had, and be able to plan, and, cuz I really wanted to talk to the Iran thing, but I only got to read, like, three blogs on it, not to get huge nuance on it, uh, like I have, on like, this other story here from this Vermillion thing, I just got a new follow from Jazz Guitar, thanks, thanks Jazz Guitar, thanks for the follow. Um, so, I'm glad, uh, and on Friday nights, we do gaming stream on here, so like, if you see this thing pop up on Friday, say we're streaming on Friday nights, um, ToeBoaterRS, you know, thank you, thank you, thank, thank you, ToeBo, ToeBoaterRS. Uh, uh, but the, threw me off when I was gonna stop looking at chat, I'm new to live streaming, okay, like, uh, so, you know, like, so I appreciated you guys all hanging out, I appreciate also all this construct, constructive criticism, I, I appreciate, um, all you people who send me, uh, messages on Discord, Instagram, Twitter, on, if, fact checking me, and mess, it's like, cuz when I get something incorrect, I like it when people come back and correct me, you know? Because if you don't, then I don't know if I am wrong, or, and then no one else learns either, um, so I do appreciate that. As a matter of fact, a lot of the people that did message me off of this thing, that made me wanna do this show, is, you know, like I said, on Tuesday night show, someone messaging me on Instagram, that made me really wanna do this, uh, come back and do this, so. Hey, thanks Christie Avery, thanks for the, uh, thanks for the, um, thanks for the follow, thanks Christie, thanks, thank you. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So like I said, new to livestream, doing my own livestream, traps are not gay, okay, alright, thank you, traps are just an adventure, um. Um, let's see here, uh, where was I? Um, so yeah, so, uh, Friday nights, we'll be doing gaming stream, I don't know what game we're gonna play this Friday night, um, but you're more welcome to watch us game, we will, we sometimes do talk politics on gaming, if more, we mostly talk politics, or something just comes out of the news, and we're doing, like, say we're digging a hole in Reinhold's terrible, um, fort that he built, um, we'll bring, I'll bring up politics when we're doing that, or if someone in the chat room, like, hey, did you guys see this? Depending on the game, I may like, stop and like, start talking about this thing, and just get triggered on something, and just go, and especially, like, if you see me on, like, if no one else gets on Discord, wants a game with me, I'll just play Shadowverse, and I easily will stop that game, and it's just like, and I may get on random time to game for that, so, but I will let them know, like, when you get the notification for it, if you hit the heart notification, that this is gonna be a gaming stream, or this is just gonna be low-key wall, which, low-key wall will just happen, it's like, it's gonna be eight o'clock, from now on, eight o'clock Eastern time, if you follow Eastern time, or, what is that, uh, UTC, what is that? Midnight UTC, okay? Uh, yeah, yeah, that'd be, cuz it's like, slightly after midnight UTC time. Yeah, you following up, you, you, you complain enough about, um, time, people, you clocks! Um, so, so, so wrap it up, um, also, so, I also thank everyone else who came onto the stream and helped me out, get me through this episode. Uh, so Stone, thank you, thank you very much, uh, hopefully we can get Stone a proper headset, and maybe possible computers who could get on and stay on longer, hopefully one time I can get Christie jumping onto the Twitch, hope, you know, let her have control of the Twitch channel beforehand, just so she can just play, you know, music, to get people in the move, almost like the opening act before the show here on Wednesday night, hopefully I can talk her into doing that. And, um, um, I also like to thank Sunset Shimmer, and insert name here, if you guys wanna, uh, Sunset Shimmer, you wanna wrap up, say anything before we go?
Uh, speaking of fact checking, uh, I'm gonna have to call you on the, uh, traps are definitely gay.
Alright, I, I'll take it back, no, you can't fact check that, traps are an adventure, um. You know, you guys need to get into the fifty-first century, okay, alright, um, all you men in the twenty-first, you guys miss it out, jump into the fifty-first century, you prefer, it's better here. Nope.
Alright.
Alright, um-
That's, that's all I have.
Alright, insert name here, um, some people in the chat, um, are questioning, um, some, sorry, that's your sexuality, do you have anything to say? Okay, he's probably busy at work, probably getting yelled at by his boss, um, probably beaten by things, um, so, um, like I said, I wanna thank everyone for jumping in-
I am the boss.
Sure you are, sure you are, we know who's the real boss.
Traps are.
What? No, 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 no. Get to the fifty-first century, okay, where traps are everywhere, it's okay, it's, it's like gambling, it's like a roulette wheel when you go out. Okay?
No, man, when I'm serious, traps are the boss.
Yeah, traps, yeah, traps are the boss, traps are awesome, okay, alright, all you guys need is just to, okay, that does sound tempting. Yeah, Christie, yeah, we can get Christie on, we can get everybody on, that's also the thing I like to do with this Wednesday show, is to give you guys more, um, the state is your real boss, yes, this, it's like, to get more feedback, and more like, more community aspect of wall, I think, you know, we can get this up, we can pump it in, and get more feedback, and more people talking on this thing, just like Discord. Honestly, when I first started the Discord, Dear Leader wanted nothing to do with Discord, did not wanna jump on, but all you guys in the Discord chat, all the stuff that you're going on through there, all, you know, the popularity from the Discord, got Dear Leader to wanna jump in the Discord, okay? So, I think we can, like, if we do that, keep a huge brush around here, we can get Dear Leader on the Twi, onto the Twitch channel, and in doing, hopefully, like, near even guest star here on this Wednesday sho, on this Wednesday show, or at least in my IRL stream on Fridays. Um, let's see, um, alright, so, um, yeah, that's this, this stream, um, I don't have anything else, so I'm going to end this stream. Uh, I wanna say, we wanna bring up any article real quick, I'm gonna give the chat a few seconds to bring up something, does anyone else bring anything else? Anyone have any questions about, that I can bring up, I wanna talk about, anything at all? Before I go, I don't wanna like, cuz I feel like this was very, well, okay, this was a lo, cuz we've been on for about an hour. In wall terms, this is short. So, I, like, I feel bad ending it now, but for any other show, this is long.
Can we shill?
What do you wanna shill, as, as long as it's liberty oriented, and not bad, you can, go ahead, shill.
Okay, it's half liberty, because honestly, the other half is slightly socialist, I'm sorry.
Socialist is only bad if it's forceful.
Then it's perfect, this is all voluntary, you don't have to listen, I would like, I would like to shill, obviously, the Armchair Politics Podcast, that I'm working with Ratface, it'll be out soon, I have to get the art done, but eventually it'll come out, hopefully be a good time.
Oh, nice, what are you guys gonna talk about on the Armchair Politics Podcast?
Uh, anything, since he is, uh, slightly more left, he can cover, uh, a little bit more ground with that, I'm over here on the hoppy inside. So, it's gonna be general news, uh, other political things, and probably some social.
Okay, okay, alright, alright, don't forget to post, uh, when you guys start doing it, it's, it's okay, you go ahead and post links in the, uh, um, in the wall Discord when you guys do things, okay?
Absolutely.
Yep, yep. Sunset Shimmer, do you have anything you wanna shill? I know you will next week.
Oh yeah, we'll talk about that later, uh, but, I'm not aware of anything that I have to shill at the moment.
Okay, alright, 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 then I'm gonna end this, I'm gonna end this stream, uh, I wanna say, uh, thank you for everyone who paid attention, thank you, 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 you guys made it worth it, like, you guys made me, I felt good once I started this stream, and got on, everyone started interacting, everyone wanted to get on, everyone started talking, because before this stream, with, um, my daughter screaming in my ear all day, because she's not being good with these solid foods, I did not, I wanted to sit here, I wanted to go on the stream for a second and go like, you know what, I'm not doing this, I, this show is canceled, I do not stop doing this, but I pushed through, because of you guys' feedback, everyone chatting, and everyone going through. So thank you everybody again, um, this is low-key wall, um, we need to make a name for this show? Did Dear Leader just jump into the voice chat? Is that Dear Leader? Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on, Dear Leader just jumped into the chatroom, Dear Leader, are you, are you on, are you listening? You gotta turn your mic on, oh, you're gonna hit the mic.
He's doing the yap pie strap match.
The what? Oh, the-
The yap pie strap match.
Yap pie strap match. Oh, gotta turn the, gotta, turn the mic off, and you can listen, you could talk, okay, he's, I look like he does, either something on his apple, it's probably something on his apple that's stopping him from doing it. And I just realized this entire time, that I had this other light on, that looks like crap right now, on the fan light, and I've got the good light on, that's supposed to be making me look good, so it's messing up my lighting profile, that sucks, that sucks. Which, um, thanks, um, NeverBitner, Bitner supplied the lighting here in this room, usually it's very dark in here. So, I like to thank Brett Bitner, um, for the, um, and the lights, and, um, before you guys all know, I have been very distraught without Bitner, I think, um, last night for the wall podcast, the first time I was out of my Uggs and pajama pants, um, after, um, Bitner left, so, yeah, so, there's that. Alright, so, like I said, thank you again for all those listening, we'll do this again, uh, next week, um, and we'll do gaming stream this Friday, the next week, I'll do another Wednesday stream. Yeah, yeah, it does, yeah, it does, alright, so we'll do another Wednesday stream, we'll do low-key wall next Wednesday, hopefully by next Wednesday, I will come up with a better name, or someone will suggest a better name, I will probably make a, um, channel on the Discord or something to find, so that someone will help find us, get a better name for this, this thing, other than low-key wall, unless you guys liked it in the term, calling it low-key wall, keep it in like, you know, it's just for the hardcore people that watch this show. But next week, we're gonna do low-key wall, and then a Friday IRL stream on Friday, hopefully I get it all set up, I'm doing a test one this Friday to see if it works, but also, um, so, probably wanna be on for like fifteen minutes, so don't, I try not to, I won't try to push that one in live, that accidentally goes out, I'm sorry. Um, but Friday night, we'll be doing the gaming stream, so, yeah, alright, so, once again, thank you for everyone tuning in, bye-bye, everybody, say bye.
Bye.
We are supported by listeners like you, donate per month, or make a one-time donation through PayPal or Patreon at wearelibertarians.com. Join in on the conversation, visit the sidebar at wearelibertarians.com, and join our Facebook group, meet other listeners, and get our daily news dump.
The Boss Hogg of Liberty Podcast is the latest hit on the We Are Libertarians network. Each week, Jeremiah Morley and Dakota Davis explore life in Henry County, Indiana.
It's a show about our circle of friends, public officials, and our experiences. Eighty percent observation, life, humor, and twenty percent politics. Boss Hogg of Liberty is the day-to-day happenings of Henry County, Indiana, which is just like your community. Add us on iTunes and sample us today.
Dear Leader would want you to.
Ah, [bleep], the Johnny Rocket Launchpad is liberty! Each week, we strive to bring you the best guests in talk radio. The Johnny Rocket Launchpad delivers weekly interviews of noteworthy politicians, experts, and activists. The Johnny Rocket Launchpad is bringing the party to the Libertarian Party and launching ideas in your direction. Check us out at johnnyrocketlaunchpad.com, and you can hear me, Kurt Nelson, and the beautiful Heather Nixon, talk about the ideas of liberty, rock and roll.
Hey guys, this is Roger Paxton, and if you're fed up with the government running every single aspect of your life, but you're not listening to the Lava Flow Podcast yet, then what's wrong with you? Check us out at thelavaflow.com, or just go back to sucking up to the government. The Lava Flow Podcast, striking the root every single episode.
It's time to shake up your podcast feed, folks, by subscribing to Lions of Liberty, the only libertarian variety show out there. Spend Mondays with me, Mark Claire, as I feature in-depth interviews with great names in the libertarian community, and fun roundtable discussions.
Electric Liberty Land with me, Brian McWilliams, every Wednesday, your weekly dose of comedy, culture, and liberty.
And Felony Fridays with me, John Odermat, where I expose injustice in the broken criminal justice system.
Find us on iTunes, Stitcher, and at lionsofliberty.com.